Good evening. I would like to call the meeting to order at 6:55 PM to go into executive session to discuss 2.1 negotiations matter BHTA, 2.2 personnel matter, teacher tenure, 2.3 contract matter, individual employee, and 2.4 district matter succession planning. Can I have a motion?
No.
All those in favor? See you in a bit. Thank you. Good evening, Byram Hills, and good evening to all our guests here tonight. And welcome to the December 10th, 2024 Board of Ed meeting. The board went into executive session at 6:55 PM. I'm sorry, we went in at 7:00 PM to discuss 2.1 negotiations matter BHTA, 2.2 personnel matter, teacher tenure, 2.3 contract matter, individual employee, and 2.4 district matter succession planning. Are there any revisions or adoptions to the agenda, Kelly? Okay, with that, can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? They moved that one. Oh, there's two.
It's a little eagle.
That one, exactly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is states, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Doesn't Mr. Walsh say something about two flags in one place? Only supposed to be one, right? We're sorry.
Item five, any comments from the public? Okay. Consent agenda, 6.1 personnel, 7.1 CSE, sub-CE, CPSE recommendations, and 8.1 business. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
I just want to take a moment. There is 8.2 in the business consent agenda is acceptance of a donation from the Phelan Charitable Fund. That is a family that donates money every year in memory of their daughter, who was a Byram Hills graduate. And for anyone that had their senior pictures taken out front where those beautiful teak benches are, that is the place that these parents have been generously funding and plan to continue to fund for years. So, thank you very much to them for a nice place for our students to enjoy and to have their great senior portraits taken.
Thank you. And now for the fun part of the evening and why you're all here. Item 9.1, recognition of Byram Hills High School students receiving national merit status and student and faculty inductees into the cum laude society of Byram Hills High School.
Great, back to me. This year, we had 21 Byram Hills High School seniors honored for academic achievement and inducted into the cum laude society. Tonight, the board and I get to celebrate the top 10% of the senior class, inductees who really show us outstanding academic achievement and also the attainment of scholarship. Founded in 1906, the cum laude society honors academic achievement in secondary schools in Byram Hills. Is only one of about two dozen public high schools with cum laude society chapters. The vast majority of the 382 chapters are in private schools in the US and also in several other countries. And to be in the top 10% of Byram Hills is no easy feat, and we understand the intense rigor that took place to get there. Congrats for such an achievement to our cum laude recipients. For those of you who were present, in the cum laude address, mathematics chairperson Lisa Pellegrino discussed vulnerability. She said, "As a teacher, I try to make my classroom a safe space for all of my students to be able to succeed academically, a place that allows them to build stronger connections between themselves and with me, and a place that celebrates mistakes as learning opportunities, a place for them to have a deeper understanding of material. But this can only happen if I build a space that is safe for them to take risks." I love that statement that she made, and I also love that I'm not sure if anywhere else in the world you're going to hear that somebody celebrates mistakes as learning opportunities. And I hope out of everything that Ms. Pellegrino said, that's something that you carry forward with you, that knowledge of a concept, that a mistake is actually a learning opportunity. So, the new faculty member of cum laude was announced, mathematics teacher Rebecca Barnum. So, she will be giving the address to our cum laude recipients next year. I will also next talk about national merit, okay, before we call everybody up. So, national merit commended students are also being celebrated tonight. The scholarship program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarship, which was started in the 50s. And approximately 1.5 million juniors entered this program when they took the PSATs. National merit semifinalists, there are approximately 16,000 students who were semifinalists in the country, and our students are distinguished in a group of the top 1% of US high school seniors. National merit scholars will be notified in the spring, and more than $26 million in scholarships will be offered to those recipients. Most of the semifinalists are expected to become finalists, and about half of the finalists will win a scholarship and a merit scholar title. The finalists will be announced in February, and the winners will be announced from April to July. The winners are selected for skills, accomplishment, and potential for success in rigorous college studies. I hope that these achievements reflect that between the work that you have done, the support of your parents and your families, and the opportunities we've been able to provide as a district gave you the opportunity for achievement. Congratulations to all of our cum laude recipients, our national merit commended students, and our national merit semifinalists. Dr. Colten Ecker is going to call you up by name and also let people know if you are in cum laude, national merit, national merit semifinalists. Board President Jason Merlin and I will be standing over here to shake your hand, fist pump, or elbow, whichever you are COVIDly accepting. And remember, the holidays are coming up, so maybe just want to really give us a nice elbow. And then we're going to ask you to come around and do a little horseshoe because your parents wait all of their lives for these photo opportunities. So, humor them and smile and give them an opportunity to say that my child was recognized tonight and I'm proud of them. Why are you all so quiet?
Congratulations. I'm going to read their names. Is this working? Okay.
Try again.
Testing, hello, hello. Got that rolling in a second.
Thank you, Patrick. Tim, you want to say check one, checks one?
Nobody finds me, buddy.
All right, okay, here we go. All right, so thank you, and we will honor our cum laude and national merit commended. So, we'll start with Kira Ekhar, cum laude. And Sabrina Thang, cum laude. Laurel Fox, cum laude. Sophia Getz, cum laude. Emily Goldman, cum laude and national merit commended. Gabriel Goldman, cum laude. Casey Goldstein, cum laude and national merit commended. Zoe Harris, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Chloe Cole, cum laude and national merit commended. Sebastian Lashmet, cum laude and national merit commended. Owen Lee, national merit commended. Andrew Levy, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Cooper Lipton, cum laude. Olivia Long, national merit semifinalist. Julia Maheris, cum laude and national merit commended. Kaylee McLaughlin, cum laude. Serena Mech, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Maya Malloy, cum laude. Sarah Park, cum laude and national merit commended. Abigail Rondau, cum laude. Aaron Stein, cum laude and national merit semifinalist. Jordan Wolf, cum laude. Emmett Wolin, cum laude and national merit commended. And faculty inductee Rebecca Barnum, math teacher. And if you guys want to have a seat, and we'll let the parents have a photo op with the students with the Board of Education for a moment.
Isn't this exciting? Come on, come closer. Like all the way into the chairs, like all the way in. Now, pick a board member and go like that. You can do it for like once. Yeah, go ahead, why not? Cheese. Cheese, how do you say cheese in Spanish, kids? Que eso, how about French?
All right. Congratulations. We're going to ask students to stay for just one more moment because we have another set of students we'd like to recognize, and we want them to have a nice crowd, too. As soon as Laris Stankel's done, I'll get a green single child. That's okay, we like that. Okay, is Rob Kustagna here? Mr. Kustagna, Scott Saunders, Brett Alcantara, would you like to come up and receive our tennis champions? State champions. So, if I happen to be a young person on this tennis team, particularly a team that has won a state championship three out of four years in a row, I would imagine by now you're saying, "Oh, can they just stop congratulating us?" We've had pizza parties, we've had parades with, I don't know, 20 some odd fire trucks, police trucks, ambulances, a school bus. Your own superintendent knows exactly how to get around in the Billy Jean King Stadium, and I don't think any other superintendent has that distinction. So, I thank you for that. You've had parades going through town. The state senator is coming to see you to give you her accolades. They asked you to be in the Frosty Day Parade. We wanted you in our parade. So, you're being pulled in every single direction. And don't get tired of people who have watched you grow up and worked so hard for this, who just want the congratulations to go on and on and on for you. And it is so well deserved. Never have I met a bunch of teammates who have been more supportive of one another, kind to each other, kind to me when I can't tell who's winning and who's not winning, and you're explaining the game to me. For years, you've been doing that. But what you have as a group and what you've been able to accomplish individually and together is something that a small school like Byram Hills thought they would never see. And now, as Mr. Walsh says, Byram Hills is tennis town. So, thank you for that distinction, and I have enjoyed every moment. You deserve every congratulations. And now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kustagna, who is going to say a few words. I would like to first to thank Jessica Kaplan, the coach, for everything that you have done. The most demeanor I have ever seen and how that transfers to our athletes, our student athletes who are out there playing fiercely in competition is pretty magical. So, Jessica, thank you so much for being here on behalf of the students at Byram Hills. Also, we have Brett Alcantara, who you are now known as tennis town, basically, because of everything he has done to get word out about you and your successes. He is the voice behind Byram Hills Athletics in getting that done for us and has just been so dedicated every step of the way, particularly with this team, with seeing you through to fruition. Thank you, Brett. On behalf of his pump, that's what they do in sports. And we also have Scott Saunders, who is our assistant director for athletics, who is new to this position but not new to Byram Hills Sports. And that easy transition of Scott into this position last year has been helping to increase and improve all of our sports, our opportunities, and to make sure that we have every opportunity granted to you that you deserve. So, thank you so much, Scott. And now, I leave it to the director at the helm, Rob Kustagna. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Dr. Lamia, and everyone here at the Board of Education for your support, for your continued support and your kind words. It really means a lot in support of all the programs that we have, especially our tennis program, who continues to do wonderful things, great things on the court, off the court, and watching your friendship on the court, in the hallway, throughout school, and here this evening. It really is, it's a pleasure to watch. And I'm very fortunate that we have a very committed team in the office that can guide the way and get the word out about the accomplishments. So, what I would like to do at this time is turn the microphone over to our head coach, Jessica Kaplan.
Thank you. I just want to echo Rob's words. Thank you to everyone for all your support, the community, the parents, the board, thank you, and the athletic department, Scott, Brett, Rob. And I'd also like to thank Coach Wolf for all of your help with the teams. And just thanks so much for all your support. And congratulations again to the girls. Amazing job. So, Jordan Bernstein, could you please come up?
She's like, "I have to forget to do this."
And next, Anika Obra. Now, Anisha Obra. Unfortunately, Amelia Siqueira Deep's going to be here, but Lena Delk. Ava Gitler is not here as well, and Danny Goldman. Eliza White. Emerson Hayes. Charlotte Sanders.
Feel like a member of the team.
And Katherine Schill.
Okay, come close, folks.
Alie Wolin. Al.
Larry, you're in?
I'm in.
All right, uno, dos, tres.
Somebody sent it to the coach so that they could send it out to the team.
Thank you so much for coming to celebrate our students. Of course, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. Anyone? Anyone? No. Do you know her? Thank you so much for coming, everyone.
Shall we? Right now? All right, well, there is no unfinished business. We'll move on to item 11, new business. 11.1, approval of the Byram Hills Professional Learning Plan. Who does this tip?
It's okay, we have more. Yes, that is. Can you let me do it? Make sure my microphone's working. So, thank you. So, I have the professional learning plan for us to review and accept. So, each year, the board approves the professional learning plan at the organization meeting, and that's required by New York State. The Professional Learning Committee meets annually to review the plan and also reflect upon our professional learning opportunities, the structures by which we offer professional learning to teachers. And we often make revisions to our plan and our processes. So, this year, we always write multi-year plans, so it was due for rewrite this year. So, the committee spent the fall rewriting the professional learning plan. And it identifies structures by which we deliver professional learning and some of the opportunities for teachers, including our new teachers, the mentor program that Gina facilitates, and our meetings with new teachers and all the teachers in the district. So, it's a great committee, very efficient, and we're very proud of our professional learning plan. And so, I recommend that the board adopts our new plan through 2028.
Okay. Any questions? May I have a motion to adopt? So? All those in favor? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next, item 11.2, and that's the BHGF donation for funding a signature grant, the Low Ropes Course at HCC. Jen has a few comments.
Yes. Thank you so much to the Byram Hills Education Foundation. We were able to put a low ropes course at HCC, which is used by our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Typically, in the past, we've utilized low ropes courses in other places and have paid for admission, so to speak, for our students to go there and engage in team-building activities. Now, we have it literally right in our backyard, behind Crittenden. Our teachers have been trained in how to do the different activities on the Low Ropes Course. And thank you to the BHGF for continuing to fund such outstanding grants, particularly in a year where they have already pledged a million-dollar pledge to the Lacks Learning Action. It honestly is a time period where we were not expecting for them to be continuing to support grants of this nature in our schools, and we are so incredibly grateful for it and other grants that are in the pipeline and coming as well. So, thank you to the BHGF on behalf of all the students at Crittenden who are working in their PE units with their teachers on the Low Ropes Course.
Thank you to the BHGF as always. And I'd like to ask for a motion to accept with much gratitude the BHGF donation for the Low Ropes Course at HCC. May I have a motion? All those in favor? Thank you. Next, on to policies. And we have a review of certain policies. First reads, from 5300.65, visitors to the school, 4772 graduation ceremonies, 4773 diploma and credential options for students with disabilities, 5550 student privacy, 8210.1 use of surveillance cameras on school property. And then we have for deletion, 1240-R. And I turn it over to Gina.
Great, thank you. Great. Okay, I'm actually going to start with the last for deletion first because it lends itself to the first policy that you mentioned. So, policy, current policy, 1240-R, entitled Visitors to the Schools. We are recommending this for deletion only because this part of the policy is embedded in our code of conduct, which is 5300, that I'll talk about in a minute. So, that's the recommendation for that one. Policy 5300.65, Visitors to the School. This rather brief policy, but important, outlines the expectations for all our visitors that come to our schools and community. Regarding, it outlines reasons as to why visitors would be present, the necessary identification in order to enter our buildings. One significant change that we made here is to include that any professionals that are contracted by the district are eligible to enter into our schools to observe our students. And also, that all are expected to follow the code of conduct when they're on school premises. Any questions? Okay. The next one is 4772. This is graduation ceremonies. This actually was just updated in January, but another required update came through over the summer. And this policy explains the participation of all students in graduation ceremonies, but specifically for our students who either receive a CEDAS or a SAC credential. Just as a reminder, the CEDAS, the acronym stands for Career Development and Occupational Studies Commencement Credential. And the SAC credential is Skills and Achievement Commencement Credential. Both, any of these students who receive this type of credential can participate in our graduation ceremonies at the time that their ninth-grade cohort is matriculating through and then ends up at graduation. They are eligible to participate and walk with them at that. They are eligible to participate and walk with them at that time. They may also participate in graduation ceremony after they receive and meet all the requirements of the credential as well. So they're able to participate again. This also, more specifically, and the reason for the update was that previously, this had only been indicated for students with disabilities, and now it's, the policy lends itself and the regulation to include all students that may be eligible for the CEDAS or SAC credential. Okay. And the next policy, 4773, similar to what I was just mentioning, along the same lines, the diploma and credential options for students with disabilities. And here, our policy outlines the options for our students with disabilities, either a credential or a diploma. And the main reason again for this change here and the required update was because of the students who are eligible for the CEDAS credential. It's now open again to all students, in addition to either receiving a high school diploma or instead of. It's not just, again, students with disabilities. And also, the students with the CEDAS or the SAC credential can continue to receive related services until the age of 22, provided that they are covered under IDEA, which is the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. Almost there. The next one, 5550, student privacy. This is quite lengthy, but just to give everyone an idea as to why we were required to update it. Again, we're just trying to be aligned as much as we can with Ed Law 2D and the stringent restrictions that are in place as a result of that law, as well as Part 121. So this reflects the changes and our alignment with the Protection of People Rights Act. So our policy, again, outlines very specific rules and expectations around student privacy as it pertains to surveys and marketing and any type of physical examinations that are held in the school specific to, you know, your scholiosis exam, your eyes, any hearing, as well as just ensuring that any info that's released on students is obviously covered under FERPA, which is the Privacy Act. And finally, it just outlines our district's responsibility to ensure that our families are notified of their rights to privacy and also provides an opportunity for them to submit a complaint if necessary. And last but not least, 8210.1 is the use of surveillance cameras on school property. This one, again, needed some updating. It had been a while. Again, here, this supports our use of surveillance cameras in an effort to monitor behavior as well as to ensure student safety, but outlines parameters surrounding the use of these cameras. This now, the updates in this policy now reflect the removal of any audio recordings and is in line with New York State's eavesdropping law. Again, our cameras are only in use in public areas where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. Again, it outlines our references to removing audio recordings and also shares with the reader who can view the recordings, how long we're required to hold on to this material if necessary, and the rights of the superintendent in terms of asking for saved footage. Any questions? That's it?
So, thank you so much, Gina, and Jen, and Tim, and Lori, and Larry.
Yeah, thank you.
Having served many years on the policy committee, I know how much work it is early in the mornings, and there's a lot of policies you guys went through, so much, much appreciated. Really good stuff. Do we vote on the five first-read policies all together? Can we do that, or do we have to do them individually? Okay, so for the first reads, for the five first reads, can I have a motion? All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. And for the one policy for deletion, may I have a motion? Although, we have to vote, right, deleted. All those in favor? Thank you so much. Onto staff reports.
Alright, Tim, you can click it. I'm going to read it from here. You'll see where I am. Nope, to the top. Yep, okay. So first, for superintendent's report, as if tonight more is not enough. We have Evan Reese, who shined at the NISMIA conference. Tim, is that her? There you go. Bravo, Evan. He earned the prestigious All-State Honor from New York State School Music Association and was selected to perform at the NISMIA All-State Mixed Chorus. It just came out today in a press release, and it was held December 5th to 8th at the historic Eastman Theater at the University of Rochester. As a member of the base section, Evan was chosen from thousands of talented students who were selected throughout New York in this past spring. Congratulations, Evan. And this was really fun. The violin players presented "An Ideal Husband", which was absolutely phenomenal. It was brought to us, delivered by, it was Oscar Wilde's play, but what I particularly loved was not only the students who were getting into the mode of the time period, but who seemed to so effortlessly craft the language. They understood it, and they made the audience understand it as well. Even though it is a non-commonplace language that we use today, it was a lot of dialogue, and yet it was fantastic and whimsical, and they just, they did an absolutely superior job. So congratulations to all of our students who were participating in our play. We had, as you all know, our state championship parade highlights as our tennis stars went through town, were received in the town hall. Thank you to supervisor Joe Rendy, who was there to receive them and said some very nice words about them as well. And then, thank you so much to Barbara De Jacinto, who is the person who's responsible for the erection of the sign that went up a number of years ago, really welcoming our kids and our families into town and showing our pride about our state champions. We have our baseball, our soccer, and then three state champions from our tennis team, three in the past four years, pretty amazing. And the parade was just beautiful, really nice. Thank you to the board members. Some board members came and marched in the parade as well. For music news, the winter concert season is here. I really enjoyed the sixth and seventh grade concerts that took place last week. This week, we have Wednesday, grade eight winter concert, and then Thursday, the choir, orchestra, and band at the high school. Friday, we have Music and Hot Cocoa with the band and orchestra students outside of Taza in Armon Square. And that is between nine and 11 o'clock, and so much fun. So please show up on Friday outside of Taza from nine to 11. And thank you also to the owners, the proprietors of Taza. In years past, they provided hot cocoa for the kids, and they just really have welcomed them there into that space, which gives us such a great sense of community. So we do appreciate you very much. And then Tuesday, we have the jazz concert featuring Ensembles Jazz Choir and Byron Beat in the Byron Hills High School Theater. So for anyone who needs to know, tomorrow, grade eight, Thursday, at the high school, Friday morning, nine to 11 at Taza, and next Tuesday night at the high school as well. And a nice concert season to bring us into the season of December and all of our holidays. That's it? Thank you.
Okay, on to Tim.
Sure, I want to give an update to our assessment report, so you know, in September, I presented the full assessment report, which had details about our students' achievement on New York State tests. And then in October, we looked at other data. We had the HCC data stories that were presented by Kim Lappel, and Chris Walsh presented information on the high school and the impact of the change in the master schedule, and generally showed the impact report for global scholars. So we continue to look at data to measure the impact of our programs on student achievement and their performance. So I want to just give you one more update, because it was last month, New York State released the official results of the New York State Testing Program, which includes three through eight ELA math and science, and also the Regents exams. And with that release, I'm able to do more detailed regional comparison. So I just want to show you a few slides and talk about the trends and patterns that we see in the assessment data, comparing it to Putnam, Rockland, and Westchester Counties. That's about 55 school districts. So we'll look at our comparison with those other districts in the region. So I'll give up just a few examples, and if you have any questions, I can go into more detail. And you have access to this reporting, can certainly look at it in more detail if you'd like. So overall, these slides show four years of data from 2021 through 2024. The red bar is last year's assessment data. And what this is comparing, those bars, the colored bars, are the Byron Hills students in ELA, the percentage of students reaching proficiency, so that's level three or above. So you're looking at their performance, and then these inner bars is the average of the districts in the three counties of Putnam, Rockland, and Westchester Counties, the 55 districts. So what we're able to do here is see two things. One, is just looking at the trends of how we're doing over time and our performance by looking at the bars, and then, or the, yeah, the colored bars. And then looking at the inner bar shows our ranking compared to the average of the other districts. So you see, for example, what I tend to look at in a graph like this, it's high level, but I look at patterns over time, and how are we comparing to the trends in the region? So for example, if you're looking at ELA in eighth grade down here, you can see in 2021 and 22, we went down a little bit, it looks like about five, four or five percentage points. However, you look at the region, it went down about 10 percentage points. So there was a trend for some reason in that particular test. And then we go back up and back down, sort of meeting about the same trend here, we're actually defining the trend in that last year. So it gives me a little bit of high-level comparison. Then we can dig deeper to see if there's anything else going on by looking at more detailed analysis.
Because the regional sample should be big enough that it washes out anything like that, at least the test itself, you would think.
Exactly.
Scott, can you say that in the microphone?
Oh, sorry. I was just asking if the, because the region, you're talking 55 plus schools, that that's a big enough sample size that it wipes out any noise? And the numbers, other than the fact that the test can change year to year, so some years the test is just going to simply be easier to score higher on the others.
Exactly, and that's sort of what we're looking at here. So it's seeing that if we go down a little bit, for example, if you look at third grade ELA, I was looking here that we seem to go down over those four years. But then when I look at the region, the region also went down by that same pattern. That tells me it wasn't a Byron Hills problem. There was something in the scaling conversion of that particular assessment at the state level that changed. The state would deny that, saying that, you know, it's the same scaling process, but I don't necessarily think that's 100% true in terms of its validity. You know, there's something happening here. Sometimes we define the trend, so we look for that as well. But you can see patterns. What I tend to see is that we're well above the average of the other districts in that, you know, we're getting most of our students to perform at a high percentage level.
And when you say, oh, I'm sorry, when you say ranked number two, what is that, is that in comparison to all the other schools?
Those 55 districts, so that's in the region there. So I'm showing you any comparison where we're in the 90th percentile here. So the 55 districts, they rank number two, is in the 95th percentile with math. So in ELA in eighth grade, we were ranked as number two of those 55 districts. So I'm showing some rankings to give you perspective as well. So that's the ELA. We can look at the math. You see a lot of rankings there. And also, similar pattern, and most of these were well above the regional average, and it seemed to go with the trend in most cases. Whenever there's any type of discrepancy, we dig a little deeper to see what's happening with that, in getting more specific. In math, in eighth grade, we were ranked number one in the region, and you see these other rankings showing that we're in about the 90th percentile in the other grade levels. That's an achievement here. At Wampus, if I could point out, in fourth and fifth grade, we've talked previously about Wampus about six or seven years ago, having been a little bit lower than where we wanted to be, and we've been working methodically on that curriculum under Peggy McInerney's leadership, and then Dave Mack's leadership, and now having our curriculum chairperson to really make sure our curriculum's aligned to the state standards and that work have continuity from grade to grade. And this data's showing me that that's been happening over time. We'll look at science. Let me explain science a little bit. Remember, we had new tests last year in fifth and eighth grade science. You see one bar in fifth grade, because the test used to be in fourth grade in science. It was moved to fifth grade. The pattern here is most districts were doing quite well. The new assessment is aligned to the new science standards, which are very different than the previous standards. Science standards weren't changed since 1997. It's a big shift, and that was a really different assessment. What I notice here is that our performance in the previous years was close to the regional performance. Even though our performance with less students reaching proficiency on that new test is lower, we're still, we're actually way above the regional average, and we're ranked number four of the 55 districts. This shows me that we did a lot of labor to prepare in advance, and we've been studying the new standards since 2019. We started doing that work. And so we're still doing a lot of curriculum work, but this, to me, is some pride in our achievement. We still maybe have work to do to get more students reaching proficiency in science, but regionally compared to other districts, we did quite well on this first administration of a very different assessment. And the same with eighth grade. This red bar is a new, it's a different test than the previous bars, and that's why you're seeing that drop off. However, what you notice is, again, we're well above the average on that assessment. So the red bar is the new assessment in eighth grade, which was significantly different than the old assessments, which were the same for many, many years. We can look at ELA. Now, we want to look at students with disabilities, but a little disclaimer is that these numbers are smaller. We're talking in the teens, maybe 20 students max. So it could be one or two students not reaching proficiency. Could be the difference in a big shift in 10 to 20 points proficiency. So we have to remember, these were really small numbers. So I'm looking high level again, how do our students with disabilities perform relative to the region and over time? And we have high rankings at Wampus. We're ranked number five in all of grades three, four, and five for students with disability, and that's the 90th percentile. And you see that we're well above in most cases. We had one year here in 2021 where the regional average was ahead of ours. But if you look longitudinally at those same students in fifth grade here, or the blue students in the sixth grade here. So again, the average was higher than that year, and then it would be the red bar, they would be seventh graders last year. So following those students longitudinally shows progress.
So it's based on the same test that the other students are taking?
The same, the same test as general, and these are just teasing out the students with disabilities and looking at those students on.
But it's not the same test year to year?
No, no, no.
No, right.
I meant in terms of JMA.
Right, right. And then looking at mathematics. We've talked about this in my September report. We have just really amazing results in both ELA and math for students with disabilities, where we're seeing high numbers of those students reaching proficiency. Well above, if you look at math, you know, this past year, in all of these red bars, it's well above the regional average. And you see the high rankings, ranked number two in the region in grades three and six, and number three in grades four, five, and seven, which is pretty remarkable, which speaks to our teachers, our special education teachers, to Kim Lappel and Dave Mack at the schools for assuring that our students have the time and the focus to really work on their basic skills to get them prepared for high school. So it gives me confidence we're really preparing our students in ELA and mathematics for high school achievement. This is students with disabilities in science. Again, you can see the rankings, number one in fifth grade science, and well above the regional average. Again, these are small numbers, but it is worth looking at that group of students. And finally, I'll just show quickly Regents. We've talked about Regents. We have really amazing results in Regents. These are the English Regents exam over three years. We only have three years because it's the new assessment, which was changed in 2022. And we show the algebra. This is, this bar here is the old algebra Regents exam, students that weren't in an expanded math program. This is the next-generation standards. So these are the majority of students who finished ninth grade last year into algebra. And global history, you only see two bars for US history and three because we were phasing in a new Regents exam. And then we have our science, and earth science, living environment, and chemistry. In all cases, our students are achieving at high levels, which is the purpose of the elementary three through eight test, is to get students ready for the high stakes testing at the high school. And you see, we have extraordinary results in our Regents exam sometimes. So that's the data. I did want to show one more piece of evidence. Dr. Jen Leighton and I attended a Westchester County event. There is a lot of effort put into Westchester around entrepreneurship, and there's an organization called Element 46 that provides opportunities for people to called Element 46 that provides opportunities for people to work on their, their business ideas and present it, and it's essentially the same curriculum that our students do at the high school in startup. Jen and I went to the pitch event, and we were amazed at how much it modeled our pitch events. But the reason we attended, we were invited by Dr. Neil Singer, who is a former parent and a community member in our district, who's a mentor to our students in the startup program. And he's, these three students mentors, Sean Newman, Ben Arnold, and Justin Wolfe, he mentors them. And Neil Singer was enrolled in this program this past year because he's working on a, a project, and he pitched his own idea, and he invited those students to come. So they went, Dr. Layton and I went and saw the pitch event, and we were able to do some networking. So we're hoping to meet some people who we can bring in for our students to benefit in terms of being entrepreneurs in Westchester County, being part of this Element 46 event. It was really extraordinary. So I want to thank the students and for coming, and Dr. Singer for inviting us, and Dr. Layton for supporting startup and these students. It was a great event. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you, Tim. Any board reports?
No.
Okay. Any communications to the board?
No.
Board reports, I'm sorry.
Kelly first.
Oh, Kelly. Sorry, Kelly.
Just gonna use one.
It's okay.
He's fast.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Well, it's the most wonderful time of the year, it's budget time, so next board meeting, I'll have the first project presentation, but I wanted to go over a report that was released just recently by the Rockefeller Institute.
Can you hear him, Mike?
No.
Can you hear me?
Oh, that's better.
So give me a mic.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. I can talk louder. So just a brief review of the report. So this is the actual formula for foundation aid, very complex, obviously something that we, that we, the government studied as part of the budget last year, prepared this report, and I'm assuming the government will use it to develop their, her budget going forward and any changes to foundation aid. So this is the current formula, obviously very complex, this is actually a simplified version of it. But there's five recommendations, I just wanted to quickly briefly review with you that I think is important for Byron Hills going forward. The first one is recommendation, again, these are recommendations, not changes to the formula, they'll use recommendations to make adjustments in the future for foundation aid. The first one I really wanted to speak to you about is a change in terms of CPI. So we talk about CPI when we talk about the maximum level tax formula, it's part of the calculation, that 2% last couple, four years. So what the governor did last year, what their recommendation is, is to not just use the CPI, right, use a CPI focused in the northeast area, that was one of their recommendations. Another recommendation is use a five-year average as opposed to the prior year. What does that mean? So on a year-to-year basis, if you look here on the screen on the left here, they use this number, they use this number to increase foundation aid by a percentage by the Consumer Price Index, okay? They're suggesting to not use that, and that's the United States Consumer Price Index, to focus more on the northeast region Consumer Price Index. So that, that would be a change, a suggestion change. They're also suggesting not doing it on a year-to-year basis, use a five-year average. If you look at this table right here, if we did it last year, instead of being 4.1, keep that in mind, 4.1, it would be 3.85, and if we, if, again, if it was back on just northeast, it'd be 3.45, so that's a shift. Last year was the first year ever the governor suggested to use a 10-year average. She took the 10-year average of CPI, she threw out the high, she threw out the low, and used the average for CPI, and that was 2.4. Legislatures fought that back and got it up to 2.8. So this is kind of a big shift, but they're suggesting a recommendation is use a five-year average northeast specified as opposed to, to the entire United States. So that's a bit of a shift, and again, that'll likely be a decrease in CPI going forward, because again, it's based on a five-year average as opposed to a year-to-year basis. So it won't fluctuate as much, it won't go from eight to four like it did from 22, 23 to 23, 24. It'll be more of a consistent, stable kind of increase, unless, you know, things change, of course they do. So I thought that was, that was an important one. I'm interested to see what the government will do on that front this year, because again, it was a change last year, never happened before, we shipped 10-year, low, the high, it came up 2.4, so be interested to see how that goes forward. Another one is regional cost index. So this is something that we talked about, advocate for a lot. Quickly what it is, it's just a change, it's a shift from the regional cost index to what's called the, they call it the C-Swift, it's the comparable wage index for teachers. So it's more specified to the educational field as opposed to, you know, your, your labor as opposed to. The regional cost factor index is based on the salary benefits of carpenters, electricians, farmers, so it's more towards the trades, whereas this idea would be more towards education, which I think makes sense. And what, what the issue we've seen in Westchester is we've been lumped with Duchess, Putnam, Orange, and Rockland, so we've all been lumped together at this 1.3. This C-Swift number, which again, is more focused on education, shows that we're, we're kind of a little above that. You know, we've always argued we should be lumped in with West, with, excuse me, Long Island and, and New York City as opposed to Orange Duchess, Putnam, and Rockland. So I think that's a good change, I will see where that goes. But that's more, again, more focused on educational field as opposed to the labor side. The wealth index, this is another one that could significantly affect us, so real quickly. So, so there's a, there's a state average, state of state average is one, is the 1.0, okay? There's a low of zero, meaning well below state average income wealth, and above that, okay? The max was 0.65, so districts that were well below 0.65 were set at that floor, at 0.65. The Rockefeller Institute is suggesting to make that an actual number, meaning below 0.65, you can go to zero, meaning your, your actual wealth is, is well below the 0.65 to go to zero, but they've capped it at 2%. So districts in this area, I should do this, like, districts in there, there are districts, including us, who are above that 2%, so we've been capped at that max. So essentially, districts above that, more of a wealthy area above 2% have been receiving more funds, whereas districts that are below the 0.65 have received less. So really, if that changes, a shift could be from those higher income wealth districts down to, to the lower, below 0.65 wealth ratio districts, so that could be a change. For Westchester, it could affect 19 districts. There's currently 27 districts that are in that zone, between 0.65 and 2%, so it's not going to change for those districts. But again, there are districts that are below the two, there's two districts below the 0.65, and then there's 19, 17 above it, so that, that's one change we can definitely see. Save harmless would be a big change. There's a lot of information here, but the gist of it is, the good part about it, is they're recommending a change in a three to five-year period, okay? If you remember the governor's budget last year, she does, she suggested over a two-year period, we would take a reduction over two years to get to where our formal is based. Very quickly, this is the amount we shouldn't, we should receive based on the actual formula, but due to save harmless, meaning we couldn't be reduced to below that certain amount, and we get the CPI on a year-to-year basis, the amount that we receive in this data is this column curve here. So as you can see, the difference between the actual formula and what we've actually received, it's a, it's a large difference, okay? So if that changes, that $866,000, that's the ones you suggested over a two-year period, you're making up that gap, meaning $430,000 one year, $430,000 the next year, you're back to even. Fortunately, that didn't happen, but that's something they're suggesting to, to bring that down, to get rid of save harmless, and get us down to over a three to five-year period, reduction of $866,000. Now, again, these are recommendations for the formula, doesn't mean it's going to happen. I've heard, actually, I was speaking to Scott previously at the meeting, and the governor has proposed that there won't be any change in save harmless for next year, so that's good news, and in the future, we'll see where that goes. Finally, reserve funds, and this really ties with, with save harmless. So this recommendation is, I guess, it depends if the save harmless one is, is recommended. Any, any reductions in save harmless, any districts that, let's say, are below the 0.65 income wealth ratio, so they're going to get more funds on a yearly basis, right? So they want to increase their, their, their 4% fund bounds, remember, at the end of the year, you can have up to 4% fund bounds. They want to increase that fund bounds for those districts because they're going to get more, more funds on a yearly basis to, to 10%, up to 10%, right? So a district's going to receive more aid, end of the year comes, they're going to have more aid, oh, I'm sorry, more funds, they're saying they're allowed to carry those over, up to 10%, because again, they're receiving more, more funds. And then they just have to pay and have a plan to spend that money down towards the budget going forward. Now, districts like us, who, who have saved harmless, they're suggesting that any fund bounds we have over 4% would go towards reducing that save harmless amount, that, that $860,000 that we're going to lose in, in aid, they say, at the end of the year, if we had surplus, we have to apply that going forward towards the money we lost in save harmless. So that, that's an interesting idea. Again, these all kind of team together and tie together, if one goes, one has to, the other has to go. So those are five that kind of fit to us, I mean, there was a bunch of recommendations, I won't, I won't go into, I, I think I had about 30 slides urgently, Jen cut me down, but that's fine, that's good, I didn't want to bore you down. But there are some other recommendations in terms of changes to, to measurements of poverty, to measurements of ELA learners, free reduced lunch, changes to that, free reduced applications are significantly down, just a lot of people aren't filling them out, so they're, they're suggesting some different ways to measure that. So some good recommendations, again, there are recommendations to the governor. Her budget comes out end of January-ish, so it'll be interesting to see if she uses any of those recommendations, but again, that's to go through our legislature, it's not an easy change, but so, so these are, this was a good study, I think, for the state to do. It'll be interesting to see how it's incorporated in the next year, and this is not something that can be done on a two-year basis, it's something that's going to be played out over many years. So it'll be interesting to see how it goes, and I thought it was a good, good practice in terms of the study, so.
I guess it's, put aside what's going to happen this year, because what's going to happen this year is not commensurate with the report.
Right.
But if you looked at the report and all the elements, I mean, it's difficult to figure out exactly where we mean if all this stuff was implemented, and obviously, not all of it may ever be implemented, we don't know. But if it was implemented, it seems like we would lose the 800-some-odd thousand dollars of save harmless, and then on top of that, there'd be some factors on the margin that would tweak us up, but there are other factors that would clearly tweak us down.
Yes.
And so on a net basis, like, we could be at risk, although it's hard to know, for more than 800-some-odd thousand, again, if all the stuff was passed. And it's, it's, it's not happening, and it's all going to pass this year, and they never will be passed, but if it, I, I, you know, just from a planning perspective, and it's going to be instructive to see what happens with the messaging coming out of Albany, I think for the next, like, three, four months, we'll learn a lot more than we know now, but I think that when we think about budgeting for the next, like, two to five years, this is not good news from the standpoint of our state funding, I think, for my side.
Well, it does depend what they, what, if anything, they choose out of this.
Right.
And the one thing I like about the Rockefeller report is that they caution that each one of these things individually will have some sort of collateral damage somewhere else, so they should each be considered for the impact that they have individually before they're sort of coupled together. The, the hope that I have, Michael Robell is still yet to come out with a similar sort of recommendation list, and he was sort of in the forefront of foundation aid in the beginning, knows more arguably about foundation aid than any one of us, except maybe Scott. So it'll be interesting to see what he comes out with, as his recommendations as well.
Yeah, the implications.
I thought it was a good report, though, I mean, I thought they really, really would.
There was information on benchmarking New York State, and there's a lot of information there. I also wonder whether in New York this year, they're going to be very guarded about implementing any new strategies, because there's just a lot of unknowns about what's going to happen with Washington DC, like Title I funding.
Yep.
Which, if something happens to Title I funding, I think it creates a different exercise than if nothing happens to Title I funding, and Billy knows the answer to that. So I think, we just have to watch it all very closely, but sort of brace for the potential to lose significant dollars over the next, not only next year, but over the next, like, two to five years.
I mean, there are changes that are going to help us, you know, be there significant roll ships.
The direction of this is not, is not positive for this district, it's just isn't.
Right.
As we look for our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you so much. Really thorough. All right, there were no board reports, no communications to the board. Other?
Thank you for the lovely lunch. Yes.
Oh, golly. The PTSA lunches today was absolutely fantastic. Thank you so much to our PTSA partners for making us feel very special.
Can I have approval of the November 12, 2024 Board of Education minutes? Can I have a motion? All, all in favor? I understand I was not here. And next, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, please? All in favor? Good night, Byron Hills. Thank you. Go Cats.